Five to six full. Currently, at our other school sites, we deployed newer security cameras in the 2015-2016 school year in the fall. And those were deployed using some grant monies. And while they were at the top of the line, there was significant, we saw that there was significant improvement to the quality that we have at Wagner. And to note, the reason that we deployed a security camera system at Wagner was due to higher incidence of theft. So leading up to further board's direction to see if we want to look at a potential upgrade of the system and to what degree whether we want to replace it with a similar system that we have other sites or use this site as a sort of a proof of concept of sort of what we want to see in a modern security camera system.
I might just add to what Mr. Mar said, and thank you, Mr. Mar, for that update or status report on the security cameras at Wagner. We did receive some information from the Arinda Police Department that I believe I shared with the board. There were higher numbers at Wagner in terms of thefts than the other school sites. I think in 2015, it appeared that there were nine. One of those was an error, a false place report, if you will, and a couple referred to injuries. But nonetheless, for your consideration, we all know it's a more remote spot. Also, for your consideration, any upgrades have not been budgeted. So I know Ms. Sidrian would kick me if I didn't bring up the fact that, you know, were we to consider any kind of an upgrade, we'd have to figure out how to best fund that because it's not been on our radar until potentially now.
Where did the security cameras point? And what areas are they covering?
So we have a total of six cameras at Wagner. We have one covering the entrance way to the parking lot. We have one covering sort of the roundabout. We have one covering the exit, which is the license plate reader. And then we have a couple pointing at various spots of the school site. So, yeah.
What's the cost to get a higher quality for camera?
So that's going to really depend on, you know, in terms of budget level and also what sort of recommendations some of these companies have. So looking back at our installations at the other school sites where we were aiming more for coverage, you know, looking at bank for the buck in terms of coverage and camera counts versus, you know, you know, higher quality cameras, we were looking at about $400, $500 per camera. Some of the more top-of-the-line cameras can run anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 per camera. And so it would be dependent on, you know, sort of the recommendations of perhaps we want higher resolution cameras sort of at the entrance and exit points of the school site and then perhaps less, you know, less expensive, lower resolution cameras if you're pointing it at a classroom or pointing it at the playground. So, yeah.
And I had a conversation with the police chief, Chief Navel. He said in terms of what their greatest needs or what their recommendation would be is that if we were to upgrade to really pay attention to those ingress and egress cameras, any major kind of theft is likely going to involve an automobile and that's where we would be able to catch that sharp resolution of those license plates.
Right. And I happened to look on the police department website, the City of Arinda Police Department website, and saw that they recently upgraded and have these license plate readers now. So when you mentioned, Raymond, the costs, have we considered what would take to get a good enough camera that, I mean, we recently had a theft, we all know from Wagner, and yet I understood that we didn't have good enough quality or whatever to really follow up in the way we would have wanted to. So if we want better cameras just for the egress and ingress, as the superintendent just said, and possibly a license plate reader, I don't know if that's the same thing, but what would that cost, you know, if you wanted two such cameras? Do you know?
Yeah, so I would need to research that and work with some contractors and bring that figure back to the board.
But doesn't mean that we didn't have good enough information on when the statue was stolen. Well, I only know that the statue was stolen, I don't know anything else.
Oh, well, one thing I, you know, remember from board update is I believe we had taken down one or so cameras from, because when the solar panel was installed, it was right where they were installing the solar panels. So I think we took one of the cameras down then. So I don't know if there were, you know, I know there was another one up, but it probably wasn't as good enough quality. Which brings up a point that I wanted to mention related to funding. I don't know if you're about to say something else.
Well, I was just wondering if that camera's backed up, then do we have a need for...
Well, I was about to say, we took one down because of the solar panel. Now we have two solar panels installed. It seems to me, you know, I don't even remember, do we have insurance covering the solar panel? But is it possible that we could install another camera there that's also at the solar panel or looking at the solar panel and could we use funding for, from the solar panel project for that camera?
Really good question. My understanding is that the funding for our solar is right on target and that we don't have, unfortunately, that would have been creative use of it, but I don't believe we have access that could go toward the cameras at this time. And there was some confusion as to exactly when the statue was stolen, which is unfortunate because obviously, once, if you were able to zero in and pinpoint a timeframe.
Time frame.
Yeah. Because typically these systems, and Mr. Mar can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, they'll record over after a given length of time. And so obviously, the hope is that there would be, the theft would have been reported and we would have that timeframe zeroed in and we could really look at those images. But, Mr. Mar, when you did review some of the images, did you feel like, even though we weren't able to help the police in catching the perpetrator to this point, that they were less clear than we would have liked for them to have been?
Yeah, yeah, they're, again, they're, I have to say, they're like VHS quality. And so especially in low light and nighttime situations where most likely the theft would have occurred, it's very difficult to make out, you know, what you're seeing on the camera, you know, on the replay, so.
Well, I just feel like since those cameras were installed apparently in the 2011-12 school year, obviously, they were way earlier than the other ones at all the other schools. And yet that is the school that has the most thefts and burglarys and whatever. That was cleared from the police report and it is true to what I've heard incidentally. It seems to me that we have to do something to upgrade the security cameras there or just add a couple of new ones which are, you know, on the driveway so that we could, if a car comes in, a car comes out, and we know what date there was a theft or burglary or whatever, we can look at it and know, you know, a lot more information than we have now. And if all the other schools have more current cameras, it would make sense to upgrade these. I would think, I assume in terms of funding, that if we can't use the solar panel funding, we could use facilities funding for this. Is that correct? Or, you know, I'm talking about our Fund 40 or, you know, our facilities project list. Would we, is there any reason why we couldn't use that as opposed to general fund money? Facilities money?
Was it listed already on the list of projects?
We did have security cameras on the facilities fund.
But it was funded from a grant.
Well, it was on the, well, I don't know, it was on the list.
The funding source was a grant. That's why those security cameras, they weren't.
A grant, what kind of grant?
It was like a Safe Schools grant. It was my recollection, something like that.
Well, it was on our facilities list. So if it was on our facilities list, I mean, I'm basically saying I would prefer us to use facilities money rather than general fund money. And I think it should be a priority to replace those cameras.
I was just going to say, if there's agreement among the board that, that Mr. Mar take a deeper look at this and perhaps at a future board meeting, if possible, September, bring back, say, three options, a high end, a medium, and the lowest, the least expensive that would still provide a much upgraded system. That could then, I think, generate the discussion about funding sources. That would give Ms. Sidrian time to be able to answer that. But it's, I know we have a lot of competing priorities, so just wanted to provide this information as an update. And I thank you, Mr. Mar, with everything going on right now that you've...
I have another question. Do the other school sites have security cameras that cover ingress and egress at every site?
Yeah, yeah. They all have cameras pointed at their sort of entryways.
And those are all easier to read, better quality?
They are better quality, but again, because we respect them out, you know, we had a, we had a sort of limited budget, a finite budget, and we were trying to get all the sites. We went for more value-based cameras rather than, you know, sort of the top-of-the-line cameras. So essentially, those provide a high-def resolution feed and they do adjust at night. But, you know, in the event that you're trying to look for a license plate, it's not a true license plate reader camera. So there is, you can catch it sometimes, but not, not all the time.
Yeah, I think Julie is, these guys that are into smashing grabs, they cover their license plates or they throw different license plates. I mean, I don't know, I'm not interested in spending a lot of money.
And it's not a real, I mean, the numbers are pretty low at every site. They're a little higher.
Right. I'm not interested in spending, seeing they've got money to chase criminals down who just, you know, they're just going to keep up in the ante and changing their tactics and, you know, responding or whatever we do. And I don't, I don't, I don't see the need to spend a lot of money on this because I know there have been smashing grabs at Wagner and the guys either, hey, they didn't have license plates or they covered them or they had, you know, it's, I just, I don't think we should start chasing our tails, spending a ton of money on.
Yeah, I agree, Matt. We don't want to spend a ton of money, but I just, and I don't, I don't want to clarify, I'm not talking about replacing every camera that is there at Wagner, but I do think we should do something better about the driveway going in and out so that it, you know. Anyway, I agree that we can't totally prevent it, but that is the school that has the worst situation. And there could be, you know, a situation of, you know, some kid being, you know, it could, it could be worse than what we've experienced. And we have not very good cameras, so it seems like a great thing to get some more information from Raymond. And I like the idea of three levels, the basic, you know, and then whatever, depending, you know, using your judgment, talking to somebody, what would make sense in this situation?
Yeah, I guess we've got one public comment to be prepared from Charles Shannon.
The President, Charles Shannon, I want to say, there's been some conversation amongst OEA members, not many, but I always have to bring this forward. There's been concern that there isn't specific board policy or administrative regulation on the use of video footage, you know, how that, you know, what do you do with that? Could it ever be used to determine who didn't set the alarm and then there was a break-in? I know at Glorietta, there was a day, because I always go through the front door, and I know there's not complete video coverage. I did notice a new camera installed that I didn't notice before. But I don't know how in the future that video footage would ever be used, but somebody went in a different way and turned the alarm on while I was there. And when I left my classroom and went to the office, the alarm was going on. And so I was the one that then left the front door and it's me going through. And I'm thinking, I don't think my district would ever suggest that I, you know, was involved in some wrongdoing, but there's no guarantee how this video footage is going to be used in the future. And I just think we need to have some clear policy on, is it just for catching criminals? Or in the future, would it ever be used against one of my members? And I just think that needs to be clear. And I'm not paranoid, I just want to be cautious because that's my role. And I can assure my members that it's ever going to be used as documentation. That could be confusing because it's not a foolproof system. There's ways to get around this system. So, sorry if I sound a little conspiracy theory.
Thank you.
Can I just mention that I'm sure any security camera who does security cameras from schools is used to that topic and maybe Raymond can broach that subject briefly with them when he gets information. Thank you.
Do we have three board members that are, would love to give direction to Raymond to look into upgrading the Wagner security cameras?
I would.
Anyone else? You have a question? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to discussion item B, Board Policy and District Regulation, breaking 12.3 Uniform Complaints Procedures.
This is the first reading, and I am consolidating the process that's required to update our uniform complaint procedures accordingly. The last revision was in 2013. So this updated policy includes revisions that accumulated over the past few years. Overall, I believe our district practice is to settle and resolve complaints informally and respectfully before it gets to a formal complaint procedure. But it's very important to have the procedures in place, not only because it's required, but because it serves as a guide for how we proceed. So in revising this policy, what you will see is some additions that weren't there before, but you'll also see that they've been outlined a little bit clearly by number. Our previous policy has just had them in paragraph after paragraph without being able to really find what page is that on. So our hope was to make it a little bit more reader-friendly through the process of anyone who needs to read it outside of the district, but also in the implementation. This is a first reading. It would come back for a second and final reading for approval. The uniform complaint policy is required to be posted in all school sites, in prominent locations, and on our website. We really try to be transparent about that process. So my hope is, is that we can get this completed early enough in the year so that we can implement the current practice in the process.
Thank you. Any questions on the board? Any comments in the public? Making discussions. This is just a first reading. After this, we'll come back to the board. Okay? Okay. Move on. Thank you. That was correct. You're so lucky. Move on to the consent calendar. There's a motion on the consent calendar.
I would like to pull a couple of things. I'd like to pull item B and item K. And I can make a motion.
I'd like to pull I, object. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar except for item E, I, and K.
Subsection.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a vote? Okay, so let's move on to consent item E. Sarah?
Okay, thank you. Consent item E is the agreement with LaSano Smith for Legal Services. I know the agreement is basically the similar or very, or the same as what we had before. I just had questions about the 5% discount part, given that I believe we're also talking about having an agreement with another attorney firm. And so, you know, I was wondering if we didn't, unless we understand this fully, do we want to delay this until next month and consider the two at the same time or what?
It just gives us, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it just gives us the option to prepay for the 5% discount. It's not requiring us to. So it's just the standard contract language that they give to us as a courtesy.
No, I don't, that's my understanding too. And I believe that the district's practice the last several years has been to prepay that amount to get that 5% discount. But if we chose not to prepay, then we wouldn't get the discount. Exactly. So it doesn't, doesn't tie us into having to pay ahead.
And it doesn't tie us to any period? If I understand, we could prepay for a handful of months or a half year or is, is there practice that way?
We could prepay, and I would have to check with Ms. Sidrian and Ms. Franklock on it, but that's my understanding is we've paid a chunk in time, maybe a half a year or, I don't know, if we've paid a full year.
Well, we've tried to estimate what the cost would be for one year, but we fall in short and have to add to it.
Ah, okay. So...
It just gives us that option to have that older trust, basically, escrow.
But I do, to Ms. Butler's point, I do hope and plan to bring to the board a contract for another firm for your consideration in September. Most school districts that I'm aware of use more than one firm. And not to use the analogy of going to a doctor for a second opinion, but I do think in more complex matters, some firms have expertise in areas where others may not, and it just gives us a little more latitude than putting all worries in one basket, so to speak.
Right. So I guess the other reason I brought up the 5% is as board, we usually only address this once a year when we're looking at the contract. So even though we could prepay for a certain number of months or not, you know, this is our only chance as a board to talk about this. And I was just thinking, if we're having a second firm, how's that going to work in terms of how much, we're using which firm? And did we want to wait on prepaying, I guess is my point, until we understand that better? Or how is that going to get decided?
I guess my recommendation would be to approve the contract now. My, in working with Ms. Franklock, I would probably do exactly as Jason suggested, Mr. Connie, that we would prepay a few months in advance, knowing that this is the firm we've used solely for several years. They do know our history. And at the time that the board may or may not approve another firm, we would then have that option to use them as well. But I would, I would not recommend a full year because I do plan on bringing another firm for your consideration. But perhaps a half a year would be sufficient. And then we could add to it as needed if we decide to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to the board? Any comments from the public? Side of the law for action.
Would we adopt consent calendar item E, the agreement with LaSano Smith for Legal Services, paying six months ahead?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to vote no on that one.
Word one. Next is consent item I, Contract with Dempsey Hill during Association for Actuarial Study. I pulled this because I was wondering, and I've asked for this in the past, and I don't know if we need to have it in the contract or if it would impact the contract, but I would just think it would be helpful for the actuarial people to give us a breakdown of post 65 versus pre 65 and, and for the breakdown by class of employee, classified versus certificated. So I didn't know if I needed to pull the contract to ask for that, if that would modify the contract, or if that's something, if there's consensus of the board to want to do that, if we can just have you talk to them and have you do it. Those are the three board members who are interested in that.
Yep.
So do you think we can go ahead and approve this?
Post, entire readout split, and then also within that.
By class of employee.
By classification.
So can we approve, I don't know if we need to amend, if the contract will actually be amended or if it's just something you can kind of tell them?
I will have that discussion, but that needs to be adjusted in your contract.
Okay.
So I have your approval to do that.
So how about a motion to approve consent item I, contract, oh, I need to, did I go in the public?
No.
I'm sorry, it's getting kind of late. We're still going back into closed? Okay. I'm sorry. Is there anything else from the board before I ask the public comment? Any comments from the public? Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to approve consent calendar item I, Contract for Actuarial Study, with the possible modification was necessary to add those categories in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a vote? And I guess Sarah, item K.
Really quickly, the only reason I pulled this was because looking at our previous contract for, this is the Short Term Employment Agreement with Margo Olson, who provides support in the area of special education. The previous contract we had with her was, we approved in June. Her, the contract actually said interim special ed director because that's when Jen was out. So obviously, she's, I assume she's no longer the interim special ed director. I just wanted to clarify, what is her title? What is her role? And is she just sort of working for Jen or what? If you could just clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Yes, she will not have that same title, but since the time that Jen was out, Ms. Woodman was out this past summer, we've actually lost, our SULPA has lost a position. And that position was essentially a program specialist that the SULPA was hired by another district and SULPA's, because of financial reasons, is not able to replace. So we have even less support in special ed than we've had in the past. And so Ms. Olson did a phenomenal job. She's certainly not Jen, but she did a phenomenal job in Ms. Woodman's absence and has begun to know our district. And she has a great deal of expertise that she brings to the position. So she would be able to help in bringing that extra expertise when Ms. Woodman can't be in two places at one time. There would be opportunities for her to run perhaps a more complex I P meeting, for instance, or in other avenues that really require that higher-level expertise. There's no official title with it, but just to support Ms. Woodman, given the fact that our, particularly given the fact that our SULPA is down a position that normally would have been available to help us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I assume the questions are, I didn't forget this one. Any comments from the public?
Charles Shannon, I'm the President. Although I understand that we have a director that is taking on two larger positions and the need for support in challenging situations is most likely necessary or is necessary. I don't know that I've seen any budget ramifications of it, you know, so that we're clear as an association how much additional money from the general fund is being spent, because that's information that's important to my bargaining team. And I know that we've taken a year off, but we still are keeping track of our budget and the impacts to that budget, so I'd appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board?
Well, yeah, just, by the way, is there a reason it ends December 2016? I mean, is that likely to continue again or is there some reason it's ending then? Do we see this as a fixed term in light of that it is an increase in cost?
Ms. Woodman and I kind of looked at it as the end of the calendar year, and that would give us a chance to try this for a few months and see how it would best work before we make a recommendation or not to go forward. So this gives us a trial period with a not-to-exceed amount so that we stay within those parameters and see the type of assistance it provides before making a longer recommendation. I don't know, Ms. Woodman, if you wanted to add anything else, but I believe that was why we came up with those parameters initially.
I would only add that I don't see the need for the district to have more support in the area of special education as going away, provided you continue to combine, to rather involve departments when it comes to complex issues. That's all I have. What that looks like past December, I do not know.
Motion?
I move that we approve item K, the Short Term Employment Agreement with Margot Olson for Support in Special Ed.
So second?
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. We're unanimous. Okay, we have two information items, and now on to communications, board of the board. If you have anything to report, make it quick.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, but I, so the CCSBA group that I'm, that's my board assigned committee or one of them, there's a meeting that they're scheduled on September 29th, and there should be an email to everybody, every board member and superintendent is invited. This is going to be at the County Office of Education, so I'll forward the email later, I couldn't find it today to bring it.
Anyone else?
I'm going to give a shout out to the people at OIS for having us on, we're just going to start there next year. The intake process has just been wonderful for what is a stressful little transition for anyone, sure different than it was 30 years ago, and it's been great so far. So I just want to give a shout out to Michael and all the teachers that make it such a pleasant experience.
Anyone else?
I'm just going to add, in the consent calendar, there, I was glad to see the OPEP study because I think that number is growing and becoming a more significant part of our budget, especially in light of Calsters and Calperas contributions going out for school districts, and I, we can't lose sight of that, I don't think, and I also love to see the contracts on field trips because it's a huge deal to our students and it's a great thing that we offer.
Okay, have we got future agenda items? Anything other than what we've already identified tonight?
Just that, you know, summer facilities projects report, you know, we would be great to have that on the agenda where we could discuss the projects list. Thank you.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn to closed session?
Yeah, that's true. We're not adjourning. We're moving to closed session. No motion necessary.